We go. I call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the city of Granbury, 6:00 PM, Monday, April 8th, 2024, at Granbury City Hall. Let's see, the first order of businesses, the public comments on agenda items. These are non-public hearing agenda items. Are there any speakers that wish to speak? We have no speakers. And next item will be the consent agenda, the approval of the regular meeting minutes from March 11th, 2024. Are there any corrections? If there's no corrections, can I take a motion for approval of the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Moore to have a second.
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Erdman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next item up is public hearings. That'll be number D1. Consider the request of Timothy H. Dobbs for the specific use permit to allow for a manufactured home in Interim Holdings I-H District at 1020 Valley View Street. Steph?
Thank you, Chair, I guess interim chair, if you will, Hallman. This request is for a manufactured home in Interim Holding zoning district. This is located north of Moore Road at 1020 Valley View Street. And this, your location map generally shows the site outlined in teal. The site is about a quarter of an acre in total size. It is a platted lot, and therefore it does not need a development agreement for the moratorium. They can move forward with placing of a new residence on the property. The replacement is due to the previous residential structure was burnt down. So this is just a new structure on a property that used to have a residence. This map shows that kind of pea-green color, all of that is Interim Holding. An SUP is required for a manufactured home in the Interim Holding district. The orange to the south is residential district R7, and the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding agriculture and residential uses and zoning. This is the site plan showing the drive that comes from Valley View there on the left of the site, and it loops around and accesses further property to the north there. Towards the middle, that long rectangular piece that's drawn, shows the proposed manufactured home placed on the property. The applicant has already been through zoning board of adjustment for setbacks. Zoning Board of Adjustment approved setbacks, and as is shown on this drawing, they actually reduced the amount of encroachment into the required setbacks, so they came closer to compliance with the installation. But they were approved at CBA for those setbacks. With these specific use permit, certain standards are required to be reviewed and met in positive fashion, and those are contained in your staff report in the agenda packet. Then they are listed in your presentation here. Generally, we can state that the use is compatible with the surrounding area. The associated request is fitting with the existing property. It is a new residential home. The nature of the use is reasonable. There's residential nearby. The site is zoned also for residential purposes, and it does not appear to have any impacts on the surrounding area. The regulations in the zoning ordinance in Section 11.1B for specific use permits are as follows, and again, this is contained in your staff report. But we can generally state that all of these requirements are met. The property has proper zoning and road frontage. It appears to be an appropriate use for the general area. The site is already developed, and this is a new residence to be placed on the site where the old residence had been located. If you find as a commission that you would like to recommend conditions, those can be recommended to the city council for consideration, and if approved, then they would be imposed on the SUP grant. Of course, the applicant has to be willing to accept any conditions proposed. Staff does not have conditions that we're proposing. And these final requirements and regulations speak to administrative requirements that are just part of the code. Public notice was mailed to 13 property owners in the city on March 28th, and we also provided the notice in the newspaper. We've not received anything in favor nor in opposition to the proposal as a result of that notice. Staff is recommending approval of the SUP request, and these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. The applicant filled out a speaker card, so I'm going to go ahead and open that. Sir, can you identify yourself and your address, please?
Yes, I'm Timothy Harold Dobbs. My address is 1432 West Torrey Street, Grandberry, Texas.
All right. Did you like to give a presentation of any information to the commissioners?
No, I just hear for any questions or anything.
All right. Does the board have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
All right. Go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening.
So there was an old house here that was destroyed, already tied to the sewer system?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And is there public water on the place as well?
Yes, all the utilities are right off the, excuse me, the curtain.
Okay. That was my only question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you, sir. At this point, there are no more speaker cards. I'm going to close the public hearing. Any final questions of any one of staff? Okay, entertain a motion on D1.
Try and move to approve the SUP as presented.
I have a motion for approval as presented by Mr. Hayes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? D1 passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. That is all of our public hearings. Next up is E1. I guess we do the monthly plat approval report.
Right. So we did not have any plats that were eligible for consideration this month, so we don't have any to report out for approval status or other status. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that concludes our discussion of public hearings.
Actually, we have another E item for discussion, the comprehensive plan update.
Okay.
And I would like to introduce our consultant, Wendy Beno, and David Jones are with Freeze Nichols Incorporated. We have contracted with them to provide comprehensive plan update services. We have a presentation for them, and we also sent out in our packet for you an exercise that if you had time, we hope that you would have read through it. They're going to step you through that also, and then provide some direction on the next steps of the project.
All right, thank you. Sorry I missed that. It wasn't on the paper report, but it was on our screen, so sorry I missed that E2.
Hey? Is this on?
I don't think so.
It's a button.
There.
Okay, okay. Good evening. Thank you all for having us tonight. It's exciting to be kicking off a project on such a monumental day. Well, I have to put a picture of the eclipse in our plan so that we can always remember kicking this off today. My name is Wendy Beno, principal with Freeze and Nichols. I've been with our firm 20 years. I have had the pleasure of spending a lot of my life in Granbury. My parents have lived here, my uncle, my aunt, my grandmother. I've got a lot of family that has lived down in the area, so it's really neat for me to be working on this project. We're going to be kicking this off tonight. I'll go through some introductions with you on the project, and then David is going to be walking you through just where we are on this process that we're just starting, some key things to be aware of. We'll go through a little bit of our community snapshot, and then kind of go through the next steps that are going to be on this project. So just as an overview, I had the pleasure of working on your 2016 comprehensive plan. Were any of y'all involved back then? See, okay, I see the chair's hand. You know, it was a really fun process to go through a comprehensive plan. David will go through some of the key details of that, but it's a really important project. And I know you as leaders in planning and zoning, it's super important for you. So I was lucky enough to be able to be a part of that 2016 plan, so I'll be playing a principal in charge role on this. David will be leading this project, so you'll see him quite a bit over the next year. Dan Seffco, who was also on that 2016 plan, will serve as a senior advisor. And then you see quite a few other folks that are on our team, giving different expertise to transportation and land use and trails and parks and et cetera. So with that, I'll turn it over to David to go through the role of your role.
All right. Glad to be here tonight. As Wendy said, this was projected to be kind of an apocalyptic sort of day by some people, and it sounds like Granbury escaped unscathed. I was down on the southern part of the metroplex today, and everything went pretty smoothly. It was a really cool event, but I'm very glad to be finishing up tonight, talking with y'all about updating the comprehensive plan. This is a long effort. We're about two months into a 14-month plan, so this is the first of a few different times that we'll come back and update y'all. And tonight especially, we're going to try to get your thoughts on a few aspects of the current plan. Since this is an update, that's what we want to start with. We're not starting from scratch on this, and we'll walk through that a little bit as we go through tonight. But your role is going to be similar to the role that the Planning and Zoning Commission played on the 2016 plan. You're really serving as a sounding board for the recommendations of the plan, for the vision, for the goals, and that's part of the exercise that we asked y'all to think about over the weekend in preparation for tonight, is really what is the plan trying to accomplish? How are we summarizing the impacts of the plan and what we hope that the city can take from the plan and really put into action? We also want y'all to be ambassadors for the plan, go out into the community where y'all have connections, and you talk with your colleagues and your friends and your fellow residents, and help them understand the process and get engaged and get involved. We do have an open house coming up on the 18th, and been working with Kira's team and with Chuck and with Jeff to really help promote that effort. Hope that we get a good turnout from that. A lot of what we're going to present tonight will also be presented at that meeting on the 18th. So to get into the process and schedule just a little bit, there's four aspects to this plan. It can kind of be broken down into four phases. We've been working with staff to complete the first phase, which is to kind of take inventory of everything that the city has done since the plan was adopted. We came down here at the beginning of February. Kira's team kind of gave us a tour of the city. We got the lay of the land and talked to some city staff members to talk about the plan and get a feel for what's going on in Granbury right now. And that helped us to get into, starting to create what you'll see tonight, which we refer to as our community snapshot, which just kind of gives us a feel for, from a numbers standpoint, from a high-level, objective, data-driven standpoint, what's going on in Granbury. Of course, we want to add some color to that, and that's why we want to have a conversation with y'all tonight. So that's kind of the second phase of this, and it's the one that we're in right now. So the second of those four phases. That also involves the community open house. There will be an online survey that we'll launch for the whole community to hopefully engage in that same night on the 18th. We are also getting into the visions and goals and how they form the basis of the plan. After that, we'll get into drafting the plan chapters, and then we'll bring the plan forward for adoption. You'll get to see it in its final form, and then it'll go to city council for adoption. So our public engagement strategy is multifaceted. There's public meetings like this, and of course, anyone's welcome to come to these meetings. There's also targeted open houses. There's two of them, the first of which is on the 18th. We're inviting the whole community to come out, and y'all as P&amp;Z members are certainly part of that. We'd like for you to come out on the 18th and both represent the city and also for your own knowledge and edification. We also have our public survey, as I mentioned, and then we're working with the city's team to create some really awesome video content to kind of help promote the plan and keep folks engaged throughout the process. Mentioned the kickoff and the tour of the city. This is the first of four P&amp;Z meetings that we'll bring to y'all to update the plan. And then we've got the two open houses, as mentioned. We're also going to go to council at some point in the midpoint of the project to kind of give them an update on what's going on. And then at the end of the process, we've got a few public hearing meetings and public meetings to kind of sum everything up before we go for adoption. So I don't expect y'all to look super closely at this, at this kind of overall project schedule, and it breaks it down into our overall various steps within the process. You can see we're in that kind of second phase. It's a busy month with the multiple meetings, and we're also working to finalize that snapshot information and also starting to get into the goals and visions. And then once we get into that orange part, as we're getting into late summer, early fall, that's when we're really getting to work creating the different plan chapters, and then coming back to you after the holidays with a completed draft that we really want to refine and get your input on. So just a quick overview of comprehensive planning. That's great that a couple of y'all were involved the last time we did this, but for those who might be new to this process, you see a lot of cases that involve zoning and plating and site planning. That really falls more, you know, on the technical side of things, where we're referring to city code a lot, where we know clearly, you know, here's what we can do as a city, here's what we can't do, and we're kind of adhering to certain pretty rigid guidelines. The comprehensive plan is intended to look a lot more high-level. It's a 10-, 20-year vision. That's why we're coming back after about seven or eight years and looking to update this plan. Obviously, a lot has changed since 2016, 2017 in the world and in Granbury. So what we're looking to update with this plan is to give the city, that includes P&amp;Z, city council, a framework for making decisions that are related to zoning and land use. It's not intended to be a rigid step one, step two, step three process. It's not intended to dictate what must happen, but it's intended to give y'all some guiding principles when it comes to your recommendations, and then council making the ultimate decision on development, on zoning, and other things such as transportation and planning out for the future, for the growth that we think is going to happen. The plan isn't zoning. It doesn't dictate what can and can't happen on somebody's property. It's really not designed to get down to that specific a level in most cases. It's also not rigid policy that must never change. It's just intended to provide community input that forms recommendations, that forms guidelines for council consideration. So just an overview of the 2016 plan. It's got 11 chapters. 11 chapters are broken out into 36 goals, 73 strategies and recommendations. So again, rather than trying to get into each of these specifically and individually, hopefully y'all have had a chance to look at the material that was sent out by Kira last week, so y'all are at least somewhat refreshed on those particular goals. I'm not going to go through all of those tonight, but hopefully we can get some good feedback on what y'all consider to be good goals that you'd like to carry forward, what might need a little bit of work, and what might have been good and relevant back in 2016, 2017, but now that we're into 2024, we need to kind of look at things a little bit differently. I want to point out two chapters that were in the 2016 comp plan that may not be reflected in the goals that y'all were given, and in this effort, we're kind of treating them a little bit differently than some of the other chapters in the comp plan. The first is the Chapter 3, Economic Development, Business Sector, and Tourism. We're looking at possibly incorporating that information into a separate update. It may end up being part of this effort. It may be completely separate and kind of folded in, but that's not necessarily part of what was given to you last week. And then the Park Master Plan, Chapter 5, that was updated in 2020, so that's still relatively fresh. We're coming up on the five-year mark with that, so as far as it qualifying for state funding for your parks, we do want to take inventory of what's maybe been accomplished since the 2020 plan so that we can update that and encapsulate that, but we're not going to get heavy into updating the goals and direction of that plan since it's been relatively recent. Everything else, other than those two chapters, is intended to be either a fairly comprehensive update or basically a full refresh of those chapters of the plan. So everything else is certainly on the table, open for discussion. We want to hear your feedback about the goals of those chapters and the information that's in those chapters. This information, so what's in the community snapshot, it's intended to basically tell a story about where Granbury is at in 2024. It is very data-heavy, so don't want to get too far into the weeds, but really want to look more at the, what's the overall story that comes out in the numbers? This data comes from census data primarily, but also some regional data sources such as North Central Texas Council of Governments and other publicly available sources. But we really focused on the city limits. That's kind of our planning area for this project, for this update. State law is one of the things that has changed quite a bit since 2016, back when cities had a little bit more ability to be proactive with annexation and planning out in the ETJ. Since then, a lot of that authority and ability has been eroded through state legislation so that the city is kind of forced from a planning standpoint to consider those areas either through voluntary annexation or through prior agreements for annexation. So the goal of this study is really to look at areas that are in the city limits or will by the time the plan is adopted be within the city limits. So I'll go through these slides fairly quickly. If you want to go back and look at any of these numbers, we certainly can, but from a population standpoint, the city is continuing to grow at a fairly good rate, a little over 3% combined annual growth rate. That's pretty much in line with where you were at in 2016, so that means a little over 10,000 population. That population is broken down, interestingly, into kind of two different primary groups. One of those is young families or first-time homeowners or young adults. You could think of them multiple ways, but basically folks in their 25- to 34-year range. So folks are kind of just starting out, maybe buying their first home, starting a family. And then folks who are kind of in their retirement or post-retirement years that are kind of 65 and older. Those are kind of the two dominant groups within the city of Granbury. So that, of course, poses interesting challenges and interesting questions because the sets of policies and recommendations that we come up with in this plan, you know, how do you serve two such different groups of people? How do you even do outreach that's effective for both of those groups of people so that they're both represented within the plan? So that's definitely something notable that came out of the numbers. That partially explains, we think, some housing characteristic numbers, such as a high percentage of renter occupancy. There's a relatively high percentage of vacancy, which, you know, could suggest a certain number of things, but it is notable, given that that's probably about twice as high as you'd see in other representative cities, that 14.7%. The median household value is just about in line with the rest of the county. It is focused largely on that kind of $200,000 and up range, so there is some housing, you know, that's considered relatively more attainable than maybe in other parts of the metroplex. And of course, there's also housing that's higher value as well. One notable thing is that the housing stock is very new. You can see about 50% or more, a little over 50%, has been built since 2000, and a third has been built since 2010. That's a big shift from when we did the last plan, so a lot of your housing stock is pretty new and likely to hold its value pretty well. Educational attainment has risen since the 2016 plan, basically across the board, from high school diploma attainment all the way up to graduate degrees, so that's been some upward pressure there. And then median household income, another kind of interesting number that came out of our community snapshot, quite a bit lower than the surrounding county, but that may, again, partially be explained by the high percentage of retired population within the city. Because when we look at economic characteristics, employment, the employment is largely focused on things like professional, scientific, and management, educational services, jobs that lend themselves more to probably slightly higher-than median incomes. So we also have a fairly large percentage of both retail and manufacturing jobs. So there's fairly good wage representation within the jobs breakdown for those folks who are of working age. Of course, we have a lot of folks commuting out of the city to go to work a little over 3,400. There's about 952 residents who work within the city, but then the daytime population actually goes up because you're importing almost 9,000 workers into the city. So that does keep those daytime population levels pretty healthy. There's still quite a bit of land that's either undeveloped or, let's say, available for development, largely concentrated around the Loop and in the eastern part of the city. For the areas that are already developed, of course, single-family residential is a high concentration of that, along with retail and commercial development. And then public, semi-public is also pretty highly represented, most notably by the airport and some other publicly-owned properties within the Loop. So with that context in mind, we want to kind of get more into the interactive portion of our discussion tonight, and that really involves an overview of the goals. We also want to do a SWOT analysis and kind of get your input on what you think are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats to the community, to kind of help us get into the frame of mind of updating these goals. So to start off the discussion, some questions that, you know, we may want to keep in mind, or any specific issues that you guys see that routinely arise, either at Planning and Zoning Commission meetings or other public meetings, your interactions with staff or your interactions out in the community, are there any issues that arise that can be addressed during the comprehensive planning process? You know, and that could be anything from, you know, the development process itself or what you see kind of being constructed out in the community, other issues that maybe are encountered with developments, maybe, you know, access to land or development standards, anything that's kind of high-level. You know, we're not necessarily rewriting the city's code with this process, but that may be something that's identified as an issue, that, you know, an ordinance needs to be rewritten or needs to be updated, or that there's some other issue that you know of that you've encountered. What specific thoughts or concerns do you have about how the city might develop in the future? You know, with those population growth numbers in mind, Granbury's over 10,000 residents now. With the amount of traffic coming in, you know, of course, that's always a big issue. As we look forward into the future, and this is a forward-looking plan, you know, what specific concerns do you have about the next 20 years? Anything else you'd like to be addressed in the comprehensive plan? You know, we have several chapters that deal with growth management, and we have chapters that deal with housing. So this is really intended to be a true comprehensive plan. Transportation is also touched on in this update as it was in the 2016 plan. What type of development projects or what type of businesses, what type of land uses? What type of development projects or what type of businesses, what type of land uses? Do you think that the city needs more of? Or do you think that the city maybe has too much of now or has just enough, but maybe doesn't need a whole lot more in order to, you know, develop into the city of 20 years from now? Anything that's not suitable? So we won't go through all of these goals one by one. This should be in the packet of information that was sent to you last week. But we do want to cover each of these, at least at a chapter level, to get your feedback on these goals. So we do have them up on the screen here. We can go through them individually if you like. The hope is that following this meeting, that you can complete that exercise and return that to staff. And we want to incorporate that, your thoughts on each of those individual goals so that we can, we can have that when we start to develop updates to these chapters here coming up in the next couple of months. And then we want to, we want to think kind of overall in terms of, again, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that we want to keep in mind. And what is this all building to? You know, the individual goals provide good guidance for P and Z and for council, again, when it comes to decision-making around developments. But one thing we really want to kind of incorporate is a vision and develop a vision that goes within this plan. And as a 20-year plan, the idea behind the question is, in 2045, what will Granbury be known for? And, you know, that could be any number of things. It doesn't have to be one thing. It could be a list of several things. But, you know, we at least want to hone in on kind of two or three key identifying characteristics that Granbury wants to work towards. You know, again, a vision isn't, we shall be these things, but this is, this is what we want to work towards. These are the characteristics that make Granbury what it is, that we want to preserve, that we want to enhance. So with that, I do have some next step slides. We'll cover those kind of at the end of the discussion. It's kind of just repeating the same schedule that we looked at before. But I do want to open up the discussion now. And I'm going to get my laptop so I can take notes. Unfortunately, it just died. So I don't know if there's a place to plug in up here. Kira, but I know Wendy will be taking notes. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up to y'all to give us some of your feedback on the goals. And again, we can bring those up on the screen here.
I have a comment. Under housing conditions, growth, and neighborhood development, how are you going to work with HOAs like amenities, individual neighborhoods, neighborhood investment long-term? How do you, you know, we've got rules that we have to go by. How are you going to work around that?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, the key thing about housing is, you know, it contributes so much to the character of the community. So the goals that we want to keep in mind with housing is preserving character, but also not giving folks so much to maintain and so much to do that, you know, as a homeowner, you start to become cost-burdened. We usually think about it in terms of the cost of housing and acquiring housing. But when it comes to maintaining housing and keeping up maintenance, keeping up mowing the grass and things like that, that can start to be a cost burden to a lot of folks. HOAs play a big role in that. And there's certain things that an HOA can do that a city can't. You know, an HOA can enforce deed restrictions and covenants, whereas a city can't do that. So maintaining a relationship with those HOAs, which involves knowing who they are, knowing who the representation is on those HOAs, is something that the city should be doing to help maintain the viability of those neighborhoods, to help maintain the sense of community and communication within those neighborhoods. But it is something where the city is a little bit limited by what state law, you know, allows y'all to do. There's code enforcement mechanisms. But, you know, when it comes to things like on-street parking and other issues that folks in neighborhoods often complain about, then it's mainly the HOAs that need to stay engaged in those things. So there's, there's a few things that the city can do, staying engaged with those HOAs. But also, you know, looking at developing programs that allow for homeowner investment. You know, several cities have come up with programs that, you know, provide grants to allow for facade improvements or improvements to properties. And homeowners have to, you know, bring some money to the table with that as well. But, you know, helping folks invest in their property and invest in the character of their neighborhoods is kind of, you know, inherent to those housing recommendations.
The crown jewel of Granbury is our historic town square. And there are countless events that occur on that town square every year. And as Granbury grows and these events become more popular, it's getting crowded and parking's become an issue. I'd like to see the plan reflect as an expansion of the town square, east and west on Pearl Street and north up Weatherford Highway, to the vision of people coming into town, park their car, and get out and walk. So that takes a walkable environment along Pearl Street and along Weatherford Highway up to the railroad depot. And as luck would have it, there's public property at each entrance point, which could be a parking Hewlett Park by Decker Gym and the old Veterans Museum that the city owns a property now up on Weatherford Highway. But we don't have walkable corridors there. What I'd see is a shopping, restaurant, entertainment district on these roads focusing on walkability. So again, we get people out of their cars. Otherwise, we just have traffic gridlock around the square, and then it becomes less attractive.
Yeah, and, you know, increasing walkability in downtown, of course, helps businesses by allowing folks to kind of slow down and window shop and, you know, allows for a better street-level interaction with those businesses. So we're really talking about extending the environment of downtown out a little bit further.
Yeah, a lot of our festivals already extend east from the square towards Langdon Center property. But we need to think beyond that for the next 10 to 20 years.
One of the things we're tasked with doing with this update, in the 2016 plan, there's a map of the available public parking areas within the city. So one of the things we want to do is to update that map showing the inventory of parking and then find ways that we can improve getting around downtown by, you know, helping folks identify where they can park, where public parking is, and maybe even, you know, showing either through maps or through wayfinding signage that, you know, it's not really that far of a walk. You can park kind of on the outskirts of downtown, and it's a pretty short walk to get into the destinations where you want to go so that we're reducing the amount of time folks spend circling, looking for parking.
Because I'm sure, you know, walkability is more than just sidewalks. Go on benches and shade of some sort and trash cans to make it nice for people to walk.
Absolutely.
Needs to be like downtown Grapevine where multiple streets and you can walk. And, you know, this place is going to keep growing. So this is something to keep in mind.
Absolutely.
Something that's been recommended to me over the years is the availability of people on the water being able to come in and park. And what they've recommended is boat docks are at the convention center or so, somewhere just to park, come in, walk to a restaurant, et cetera. And I don't know how many you can get in there. And that may not be the only place as well. But you could probably put 20 to 30 in there or just someplace for, because we're having, we're going to have a lot of boat traffic. We already do. And they just need a place to stop and go have lunch. Might think about it.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to address the lack of city parks, specifically south of 377. I don't know of a single city park south of 377. Every city park is either here, the city park, Hewlett Park, or the parks where the baseball fields are, all pretty close to walking distance from the square. And that's all. That's it. That's it.
Yeah.
And I think that's disadvantage to anyone that lives south of 377. And that's where all your, most of your major development is going, other than maybe out at Abe's Landing. There's not a single park south of that entire roadway. So.
There is a park being, it's, Kira, it's under construction right now. I believe we looked at it a couple of months ago.
Oh, it's Sarasota. Is that a city, though, or is that a development park?
There's a city park that's under construction right now.
Oh, okay. Had no idea that there was one even being built there.
Rough Creek Park.
Yeah. And most of the parks have been left up to developers, you know, and HOAs to develop and maintain. But I just think it'd be nice for individuals that don't live in an HOA that don't have a dedicated type park to have some type of access and not have to drive a long distance like they do now. So.
And part of that is going to be made difficult by just kind of the shape of the city, that you have the concentration of parks in kind of the historic area of the city. And you're seeing a lot of development that's kind of far-flung over there on the east side. So almost have to treat it as, you know, almost a new part of town for the purposes of developing parks that people can get to on foot. You know, there is a place for HOA-owned parks or, you know, community parks that aren't owned by the city. But generally, a public area that's owned by the city, that's open to everybody, you know, will attract a larger portion of the community and have more activity taking place and kind of instill that sense of community within the area that it's in. So there's a balance to look at there. But, you know, ideally, you would want parks that can be enjoyed and shared by the entire community and really no more than a 10- or 15-minute walk from a good portion of the folks who are using it.
Yeah.
I think one of the biggest issues that's going to take place, that's going to have an impact in Granbury in the next five, 10 years, is going to be this whole 377 expansion. Will this plan take into account anything that has to do with the potential quality-of-life issues and any kind of commercial issues that are going to be impacted by this roadway construction and an expansion?
Yeah, that's something we had a lot of conversation with about staff or about with staff or the planned improvements to 377. Of course, as your main commercial corridor through town, it not only carries a lot of the traffic, but it's really your front door. When somebody's passing through Granbury or even if you live here and you work somewhere else and you're coming into town, you know, that represents to a lot of folks the first impression that they have of Granbury. So we want to take into account those improvements and not only what they'll do from a traffic standpoint, but also the continued development and redevelopment of the 377 corridor. And even though it's 377 from the east side of town to the west side of town, it looks and feels a little bit different depending on where you are. If you're going over the lake versus, you know, you're over by HEB or Home Depot, it's going to take on a little bit different character. So we don't want to, we certainly don't want to paint the entire corridor with the same brush and have recommendations that apply equally to the entire corridor. Ideally, we'd want to look at it in segments or we could even call them character areas and come up with ideal recommendations for the areas where you've got more big-box stores, you've got more new development, and areas closer to the historic parts of town and areas that are closer to the lake, and come up with specific recommendations for those areas. So that's, I think, a big part of this plan that will touch, obviously thoroughfare, but also community character, aesthetics, because we want to make sure that we get that part right because it does play such a big role in how Granbury looks and also how it operates.
Any other questions? Anyone?
My wife would like to see a big fat mall on the.
A mall?
A mall, yes. Big mall. Just anywhere.
Gallo, really?
Yes.
Gala, okay. Well, we'll do some site hunting for that.
That actually does bring a question to me regarding other businesses attracting businesses to town. And we've always had, you know, economic development issues and things to attract larger businesses that are also big employers to town. Anything like that in the plan or ideas for? You know, I know we've had trouble in the past trying to get an economic development group together. But if there's something like that that would bring in jobs more than anything?
Yeah, and there's a lot of kind of available land or, you know, there on the north side or within the Loop or over by the airport that's kind of been earmarked for industrial for a long time. So I think part of the conversation is, you know, what does that area look like in 10 to 20 years? It's kind of one of the best places for job creation and growth. So I think that carries with it some important questions. You know, what kind of jobs are we going to attract? Maybe it doesn't get down to the level of, you know, a specific business, but what mixture of jobs are healthy? You know, looking at your jobs profile now, it's a pretty good mixture of, you know, office-type jobs and then manufacturing-type jobs. You know, what could contribute most to the local economy? You know, not just from a job growth standpoint, but also, you know, attracting folks into the area, you know, from the standpoint of more hotels or meeting space or things like that. So it's really trying to find the right mix of both those types of jobs and types of businesses. So I think that the feedback on that that would be helpful is kind of knowing what types of businesses, what types of developments, you know, you would want to see within that area so that it isn't sitting empty, you know, with all the infrastructure and investment that's gone into that area. You know, what types of businesses would work best out there? You know, with something that doesn't necessarily depend on a lot of vehicle trips or pass-by trips, since the Loop is kind of an incomplete Loop, doesn't carry the same amount of traffic as 377. You know, it may not be the best for retail businesses, for instance, but it may work for, you know, office or, you know, some type of corporate user out there. Are there any particular, specific goals that stood out as y'all were, you know, were looking through the list of goals from the 2016 plan? You know, kind of summarized, that first one kind of sets the tone from a land use standpoint, you know, establishing an effective pattern of land uses. And then that kind of gets into, you know, coordinating efforts and enhancing overall quality of development and community image as we discussed. You know, ensuring that public facilities and infrastructure meet future needs. Obviously, that's played out in a big way in Granbury since 2016. And we're making some progress in headway on that front to plan for the future. But are there any individual goals within any of these chapters that stood out to y'all as?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Most of them are good. Most of them are like motherhood and apple pie. But there is one that really stood out. It doesn't seem to.
But, but there is one that really stood out, it doesn't seem it, it fits, and that's encourage alternative energy sources.
Okay.
I mean, the character of our town is a historic town. I, I can't imagine big windmills being erected as an alternative en- energy source, or fields of photoelectric arrays for solar power. It just doesn't fit with the town at all, and I think that this, this goal doesn't fit with, with the direction of Granbury, or the character of Granbury.
So, I, I would think from, you know, from a wind generation standpoint, given that y'all have some, some topography, you know, a little bit higher elevation, but the, the prevailing winds might not, might not lend themselves, you know, that much to, to a big wind farm. But from a, from the standpoint of kind of personal alternative energy devices, you know, in terms of household solar, you know, you're, you're talking more kind of the big industrial size, you know, megawatt size arrays, not necessarily solar panels on, on houses, just to clarify.
Honestly, there's not a whole lot the city can do with, with solar on houses, because the state has taken away our controls.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, so it's, it's really more kind of solar as a land use.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any others?
Any other questions? Anyone?
I'm good.
Well, that was kind of the, kind of the reason for the exercises, so that, you know, would have some time to, to kind of think through it and, you know, ruminate on it a little bit. We weren't putting y'all on the spot too much tonight, so if y'all have the opportunity to, to complete that exercise and, and return it to city staff, that would be, that would be a big help. Did wanna get into kind of this exercise, and maybe it helps us kind of circle back to, to some of the goals, but in terms of, you know, the, the strength of the city, we wanna kind of take this at, at a high level. So, you know, kind of brought up historic character of, of the city, you know, if, if that's a, if that's a strength, then, you know, we, we wanna record that, and then also look at particular weaknesses. They don't have to necessarily be related to the specific goals of, of the plan, but just kind of given a, a broad, high-level overview of, you know, the, the things you, you like about Granbury, the things you're kind of proud of, what you think are the strengths of Granbury, what might be weaknesses, what are opportunities for Granbury to go from good to even better, and then what are some threats for things that, in terms of things that, you know, may erode the things that are good about Granbury, or, or may limit the opportunities that you, that you have. So in terms of strengths, you know, what, what are things about, about Granbury that you think, you know, the city does particularly well? You know, not necessarily in terms of city government, but just in terms of the, the things that, that Granbury has done over the years that have kind of brought it to this point and, and given it, you know, an advantage, or, or given it some, some things that are attractive, or, or given it its character?
Our tourism is a huge strength. By bringing in extra people, it brings in tax revenue and gives amenities to those of us who live here that the residents would never be able to support without tourism.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And to the, to the flip side of that, the, as a weakness, I think we have a, we've always had an issue with, you know, we love having the lake, it brings people in, but it also restricts traffic flow, big time. With only having two bridges across it, it really does bottleneck, you know, the way traffic can get from one side of the town to the other. That's something that I know with Tech Start doing their thing and wanting to expand the highway is great, it gets more people down, but they're still down the same thoroughfare.
Right.
If there was something that we could do to create alternate lanes of traffic to get from one side of town to the other would be great.
And since you brought that up, you know, one, one of the conversations we had with, with staff, and given the way that the city and, and the county kind of have jurisdiction over certain areas of, of the town, building parallel routes to 377, kind of to your point, everything kind of chokes down to, to 377, but building parallel routes or upgrading them is, is difficult, because you have roadways that kind of go in and out of, of each jurisdiction, so that, that really does create a, a challenge. You know, the, the loop is good, it, it helps to, to divert some of that traffic off of 377, but it doesn't go all the way around the, the town. So, I mean, that's, that kind of exacerbates the, the challenge that, that you're talking about, is, you know, how do you, how do you complete those alternate routes? And is it, is it, you know, do, do we try to do all the segments that we can, and, and do, you know, hope that, that we can kind of build that out in the future as, as maybe more annexation occurs, or, or more cooperation occurs? Or, or do we look to supplement what we have with our vehicle network with, you know, we were talking about walkability and kind of alternate ways of, of getting around town to kind of help alleviate that problem? Because, yeah, building, building more lanes on 377 is, is great, but you still have people using the same route to get from, from A to B, so that the traffic issues will, will still be there. So that, that goal number two, you know, monitoring and coordinate regional transportation system planning efforts becomes, you know, becomes crucial to, to helping folks get around. So we've, we've had a, a strength, tourism. Do, we wanna talk a, a little bit more about, you know, what certain aspects of, of tourism, you know, what, what draws tourists in? Because you, you have a huge amount of competition in, in this area for tourist dollars and, you know, attracting people. Lots of cities can claim that they, they have a historic downtown, you know, what is it about Granbury's in, in particular that, that sets it apart?
We do things with our downtown. I mentioned before that there are festivals every month, sometimes multiples in, each month, that, that bring people in. It fills the hotels, it fills the restaurants, it fills the cute little shops that would never survive without the tourist dollars. And it's that active life. It's not just a pretty set of buildings to come look at. It's come and listen to music, and, and eat good food, and celebrate General Granbury's birthday. And I see last, last weekend was the Oink Oink Fest, which was originally gonna be called the Schwein Fest, but nobody thought anybody here knew enough German to know what that meant. But we have arts festivals, and music festivals, and jazz festivals, and a huge Fourth of July parade. It's all these constant events that, that bring life to the downtown. You, you come on probably half the weekends a year, the square is packed with people. We, we have music venues on the square. We have the Opera House with, with plays and, and bands, we have Granbury Live that brings in bands all the time. And we have, oh, who's a couple of the, the bars and restaurants around the square have live music all the time. It just keeps people there, it's, it's a vibrant place. And it's not just old buildings that are pretty to look at, it's things happening that engage people and make people want to come and sit down with friends and have a glass of wine. But, you know, how many wineries are there on the square? Six, eight? I don't know. Everyone has tasting rooms, and people meet there, and, and they meet friends, and they have a glass of wine, and have a good time. It's, that's what brings people in. It's not the pretty old buildings. You're right, lots of cities have those.
That's true.
It's the activities of, of our, our town. It's the constant do-things-with-people that brings the people in. And that attracts people from outside the, the community as well.
And then they, they go home, and they tell their friends, and...
Yes.
And their family, and, and then they come, yeah. A, a lot of, I think a lot of the planning that, that goes into, you know, doing this type of long-range exercise is looking at how do we build that critical mass of, of people, so that, you know, it, it becomes this kind of self-sustaining thing where, you know, we've, we've maintained that character through festivals, through programming, through arts and businesses. You know, I'm, I'm hearing that y'all are kind of at the point where you've kind of achieved that critical mass, and you've got activity both in the daytime, and you come through here at night, and, you know, I've, I've been here at night, and it's just as active as it is during the day. And there's, there, there's a lot of cities that, that are bigger that have historic downtowns, but they're quiet at night. You know, 'cause folks leave and the restaurants close, and there's nothing to do. So it sounds like it's more maintaining that critical mass, preserving...
Yeah, it's not, not messing it up is important.
Not messing it up, yeah. Okay, that's great.
About a, about a year ago, our, our tourism department set off to make us the official town of something. And there's, every Friday morning, the tourism group sponsors a rise and grind session where business leaders and nonprofits get together, and we sat at one of those and had a brainstorming session. There were fifty or sixty different things suggested. The monarch butterfly capital of Texas, the historic capital of Texas, the lake capital of Texas, the winery capital of Texas, the blue bonnet capital of Texas, the white pelican capital, and on and on and on and on and on, and they're all good, and all something that we, we celebrate. But the, the beauty of this town is through that session, it dawned on us that we celebrate everything. We're now the official celebration capital of Texas. 'Cause that covers everything that we do.
Yeah.
Not just one weekend a year. And that's the critical mass, that's the energy behind the tourism in this town that, that brings in all those dollars and makes us such a great place to live.
So the celebration capital of Texas.
Yes.
I believe, I believe the last, if my number's correct, I think there's thirteen festivals in a year that they have.
At least.
There's at least one of them.
Yeah, so that, that's about one out of every four weeks out of the year, just my quick math, not that I'm a math major.
Well, I think, I think Tim made the point too. I, I think we need to think about, you know, we have the lake here, right, which is, you know, a huge amenity, right?
I agree with you, the downtown area is fantastic, and we're doing a really good job with that.
I don't think we're meshing those together as well as we could, and a lot of it has to do with access, boat access, marine access...
Yeah, they're missing...
To the downtown area in some form or fashion. I think we really are, no pun intended, I think we're missing the boat there.
Yeah.
And I think that's something that really should be looked at.
City council.
We'd also take care of a little bit of the pedestrian, or the, the traffic situation.
Yeah.
If you had more ability...
Yeah, that has trickle-down effects.
There was a plan to put public boat docks by, by the conference center.
Yes.
And the, it was in a bond that the city floated, but other things got more expensive, and they ran out of money before they built them. But that'd be a good thing to have in the plan.
Yeah.
And in development, commercial development, restaurant development, that type of thing.
Oriented around the boat docks, yeah. Well, I, I think you're right, you know, the, the trickle-down effect of that is if more people are able to access downtown through, through those boat docks, then that, that takes additional cars off the road, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, helps out with that as well.
A, a, a strength that I think often goes unrecognizable is just a year ago, we opened a new runway at the airport, making it much longer, so much larger planes can come in here, and the demand for, for space at the airport has just exploded. The, the five-year plan will be reached in about two years, because people want a place to put their, their private aircraft, and there are aircraft-related businesses coming to Granbury. Perhaps a, a charter service and maintenance services that bring good jobs to the city, but it's also, well, we will probably never have scheduled passenger service into Granbury, and I actually hope we never do. Charter service is a strong possibility from Granbury, and opens up other additional doors. And one thing our airport does is they have some semi-retired city vehicles that are out at the airport for people who fly in to use for no charge, to come into town and go to a restaurant, and do a little shopping, and then get back in the airplane and fly away again. I mean, that's a type of welcoming atmosphere the city has.
Yeah.
But that airport is a huge asset to town, going to bring in huge tax dollars as it's the private businesses lease the, the land on the airport. The city owns the property and doing land leases for hangars and businesses.
Which sounds like a great opportunity for, you know, promoting that, that area of town, and, you know, as, as folks come in and, and utilize those services, and, you know, they become more aware of the opportunities that are here from a business standpoint in addition to a, a tourism standpoint.
Yeah. I, I wanna go back to a weakness that Mr. Glass mentioned, and that's the, the 377 and the two bridges, it's actually three bridges over the, over the lake if you count 51, and you know the back way to get up there and go around. But if there's a wreck on, on the main bridge over 377, the, the second bridge on, on Pearl Street gets jammed up in about thirty seconds.
Yeah.
And pretty much gridlocks the town. And a weakness is Granbury's essentially a linear city. It runs east-west, north-north, whatever direction you wanna call it, and it's narrow and long for most of its width, and what we, we need to do is figure out how to keep people from having to cross those bridges. And I think Mr. Holman talked about parks. There's very few parks on the east side of the, of the, of the lake. So that's an amenity that if we put on the east side, people wouldn't have to cross those bridges to get to the ball fields. And we look at, at businesses are all on 377, they're all on the east side of the lake. So if you live on the west side, you wanna go shopping, you pretty much have to cross the lake. So that means we want more retail development over time west of the lake, along 377, perhaps along the loop. Again, if we can keep people having to cross those, that lake, we solve a lot of our traffic problems.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and in addition to putting those retail opportunities over there, if we can increase the, the job opportunities as well, then folks aren't having to drive outside of town to go to Fort Worth and also utilize the, the bridge.
And that, that brings up a threat, traffic.
Yeah.
Traffic is, is probably our number-one threat. Now, I moved here from Atlanta, and I think traffic is heavenly, even on bad nights.
Yeah, I second that.
I will tell you that the worst traffic day in Granbury is better than the best traffic day in Atlanta.
You're here.
But if you've lived here your whole life, it's gone from wonderful to challenging, and I understand that. And that will can choke off the, the tourism in a heartbeat. If traffic gets too bad, who would wanna come and sit in traffic for a while?
Well, and again, during this construction phase that we're gonna go through, there's nothing we can do about that, but that's, that's gonna be a significant threat to this entire town, especially when it comes to tourism. Who's gonna wanna come here to endure all that?
Well, I...
And I don't know what you'd kinda do with it.
I think there are ways, again, there's a way to get to the, the 51 bridge over, over the lake from the east side. It's on little two-lane roads, you better have your GPS or, or know the area. But that needs to be, as we get to construction, and it will probably be on the scope of, of your project, as we get to construction, that needs to be made known to people in some manner.
I think part of that too, with the traffic, is the amount of people that commute out of Granbury to go to work. That, you know, if you, if you're trying to cross town at four to five o'clock in the afternoon, or, you know, early in the morning, I'm a realtor, so I don't get up that early, but, you know, from, from eight, eight o'clock in the morning, it's, it's horrendous trying to get through there, and that's 'cause everybody's leaving town. If we could find something to promote more businesses, to hire people that can work and stay local, I would hope that that would alleviate some of that traffic on 377 as well.
Yeah, and the, I mean, the profile of the folks who, who live here, I mean, obviously they're, they're leaving town to go to those jobs now, so, I mean, they're, they're here in, in your town, you know, they're, it, it's not as if we need to expend a lot of effort attracting folks who have a higher educational attainment or, or profile that employers might find attractive, now that it, it is interesting, kind of going back to the, the two different sides that make up the majority of the population, or either younger or older, not as many folks there in kind of their prime working years who, you know, have that kind of level of experience that are more, you know, management-oriented, or might, might be in, in that type of job that you need to go to Fort Worth to, to get to, so that might be kind of a focus area, but...
Didn't, didn't we have a slide earlier on the people leaving town every day?
Yeah.
Can we go back to that? There we go, eighty-eight hundred and fifty-four workers commuting in.
Yeah, that's your problem.
Which is almost triple of, yeah, what's commuting out. Which is almost triple of, you know, what's commuting out.
That's the problem.
Some from a standpoint of restaurants, yeah, that's great, but from a traffic standpoint, that's kind of a worst-case scenario.
Can you go to the slide that has the age? Yeah, that one there. So literally, huh, let's see, from about retirement age, thirteen percent, twenty-seven, forty, almost fifty percent of our city is over the age of sixty.
Yeah.
Or fifty-five or so.
That surprised me.
So that's a disadvantage in terms of bringing any type of a large corporation here, manufacturing. That's tough. I mean, it is when fifty percent of your workforce is over the age of retirement already.
There's primarily been a rural city.
Yeah.
And of course, that kind of reflects the size of the generations that fit into those age ranges, you know, you've got the baby boomers who are a very large generation, and then you've got millennials who are a large generation, you've got Gen X in between. It's attracting more of that Gen X age range, but there's not as many of those to attract, you know, representative, representatively speaking, to make up a word. So, I mean, that, yeah, I think that's kind of the key challenge, is how to get more folks in that age range. To if not work here, then, you know, at least move here and kind of balance that out, because job creation, you know, gets fueled by having a workforce in close enough proximity, and there's not a whole lot around Granbury, you know, and the rest of the county to kind of pull from. Y'all are kind of on an island to a certain extent. You know, the county has a little bit more evenly spaced population, you know, in that regard, but it's still not a large number of people.
Yeah, we have a trend going where we fall below the state percentages up until about twenty-five or thirty-four, or thirty-five to forty-four, and then we start, generally start exceeding the state percentages as we get older. If you look up to the seventy-five to eighty-four years, oh, look how far our percentage is out past the state.
Yeah.
Of three percent.
Yep.
We're at fourteen, we're at thirteen almost percent.
Yeah, so, I mean, that really gets into the question of what is the Granbury of the next twenty years, you know, look like? Not only are we attracting more folks in that middle age range, but when the twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds, when they start aging, you know, is there housing for them here, are there jobs for them here, do they move out and go elsewhere? And then kind of their kids to follow them. So, you know, maybe that comes through programming, like we've been talking about, you know, festivals and other attractions, but I think a lot of it comes, you know, from the standpoint of jobs. That fuels population movement.
Yeah. Yeah. I've also heard, you know, some complaints that there's not a whole lot of things for young families to do with children in the area. I know some cities have invested in these splash parks that have been huge draws, you know, for the community and for their children to go to. I think we have a very small one, that's extremely small. I do applaud the city for the beach and that vision that they had, you know, building that and utilizing it. I do think we are missing the boat with the actual boat traffic on the lake. I do agree with that. Any weekend you can go to the marina that's Stumpy's, it's big marina, you can't even park your boat in there, there's so many people there eating. It got to the point where I think a year or two ago, someone was driving around on a pontoon boat selling barbecue off of it to boaters.
Yeah.
I mean, you could literally call them on their phone and they'd meet you and sell barbecue to you right off the boat, so...
Uber eats with a boat.
Yeah. Well, they were actually cooking onboard the boat, and, yeah, serving it right off of it.
Yeah, okay. So food truck on a boat.
Yeah. So I think that's, you know, those are potential things that the city's missing in terms of customers for local restaurants, sales tax revenue. You know, by building boat slips, be it over by the beach area or what, they could attach boat slips to that walkway area that's out there, that is along the beach area, that's a very, you know, that boardwalk, very easily could attach boat slips to that and build, you know, some top of a staircase up to that. But I just think there's an area that they're, that they are kind of ignoring that might be addressed, so...
Yeah, that's great.
But we are keeping up with the pickleball courts.
Yeah.
There you go.
So question, a lot of the talk about, our discussion about businesses and attracting employment or attracting employment opportunities, that's your Chapter Three item, is it not? Or is, are we talking about something different?
Yeah, that would be, that would fall largely under economic development in that Chapter Three. You know, it might fall a little under Chapter Four as well, and possibly Ten and Eleven. But, yeah, that's going to be heavily involved in the economic development side of things.
So, I've been here for nineteen years, and that whole western side out by the airport, the quote industrial park, et cetera. I drove by there the other day, it was around that side of the loop, it was the first time I'd driven by for a while. And I couldn't help but think what a tremendous opportunity that is, not just to create business or to attract business, and sometimes communities have to buy that business, they have to financially attract it. But once that would start out there, it would develop quickly. I mean, we're building a lot of houses in this community, so there's places for people to live. But if we want to change the demographic of this community, and we think there's an advantage to do that, then if the businesses were there, if the employment was there, there would be more restaurants out there, there would be more activities in that side of town, et cetera. Now, it would also create a problem where you've got more people that are going in two different directions across the bridge, but still, that's our opportunity. But it seems like that's a real strategic goal or objective, if you will, is how do we, how do we change that big open space that's got one tiny building in it right now, as far as I can see, to make that something? And, you know, why hasn't it? I think those are some important questions to ask, is why hasn't that grown? Why haven't we been able to develop that? And as was pointed out, we've certainly got the airport to support, you know, the technical kinds of businesses and so on that, you know, that would attract those kinds of employees and make it a young community which attracts more people and more tourists. I think that's a big, important part of our long-term strategy.
Absolutely. I think that raises a lot of great points about the multiplier effect that investment out there has. I mean, the city can only do so much to kind of induce development out there. You need kind of somebody to put their own skin in the game and be the first to go in and say, okay, I'm going to develop out here, I'm going to bring business out here, and then once you have that proof of concept, then that makes it easier for others to do the same and to bring their capital to the table. And then I think you have follow-on effects from that in terms of kind of balancing out where the traffic goes in the city. And not everybody's going east to get to the retail and the shopping and the restaurants, and we start to get more of that on the west side. So hopefully, we can look at some of those things through an economic development lens with this plan. We're still working out exactly how that's going to look, but, yeah, that's such a big key issue that it needs to be addressed, because I think it works into a lot of other things that, you know, this effort needs to address in terms of housing and demographics and traffic and a lot of other things. Hopefully, we can take a look at that.
The other thing I'd like to see is some IHOP, but that's just me.
Maybe we can call it a sit-down breakfast and lunch place.
Well, the other opportunity is, I'm kind of a nature guy, I take pictures of things that live, wild things. And I love Acton Nature Center, but there's a lot of surrounding area in the county that could potentially be developed, maybe some boardwalk areas farther up on the lake or something like that, that would attract that element of people of interest. Just a thought.
Okay. I like all the suggestions around the lake, because I, you know, from kind of an outsider's perspective, and I've lived in DFW for eight years now, so, all on the southern side of the metroplex, so we've visited Granbury several times, and, you know, from an outsider's perspective, the lake is a defining feature of Granbury. I mean, that's something that, other communities have lakes, but, you know, they're outside the city, or, you know, it's kind of one thing, and then the city is something else. The degree of integration that the lake has, just in the middle of town, definitely sounds like something worth exploring. So I like the feedback about maximizing that.
Your biggest problem in all this is we have no help, no workers. So that's why that big number is people coming in here to work. Well, we've got to figure out how to attract more workers to stay here and live here, then your traffic would be alleviated. But if we're going to be all retirement community, we're not going to have anybody working in the restaurants, and so that's something that needs to be addressed before anything else, is how are you going to get people here to, instead of this eighty-eight hundred coming here every day, you know, going across the bridge and going to work and all that, which is great, I mean, but that's where you've got to start, that's your first focus right there.
Part of the problem is I cannot afford to live here.
Yeah.
Our cost of housing has skyrocketed in the last ten years, and young people just cannot afford a three or four hundred thousand dollar home.
Oh, go to the grocery store.
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else? I think we've heard about all three, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. Again, this really helps inform, you know, both how we reinforce the goals that are in the current plan and how we look at it going forward. In terms of kind of looking at things from a vision standpoint, you know, these are some ideas, you know, Granbury will be known for, could pick one or more of any of the things listed. Obviously, waterfront community has come up quite a bit tonight, historic places, unique downtown, maybe business and industry center, that's, that would really be something that's kind of aspirational at this point, kind of something the community would want to strive for, and maybe something that's been achieved up to this point. Any from those lists, from that list that stand out, or anything that's missing?
I think the small-town charm. A lot of people say, well, Granbury's not a small town anymore, but I came from living in the DFW area my whole life, and this is incredibly a small town to me. It's, I guess, all about perspective. I thought about this yesterday, I went to HEB to go shopping, and I spent more time in HEB talking to people that I knew. I ran into three different people in the store that I knew. I never ran into anybody that I knew in DFW, in the store, ever! And so I thought about that, I was like, it's kind of unusual that every time I go to the grocery store, I go out to eat, I see somebody that I know. So I think that proves that it's still a small town, because I can barely ever think of running into somebody that I knew in DFW.
And I think that's something that needs to be a focus moving forward too, is as we do grow as a city, and the population is going to expand, obviously, that things are put into place or ideas are set out there that can help preserve the feel of a small town, even as our population exceeds what you would considerably call a small town. I think that's real important, to promote that style.
And that gets into so many things, right? I mean, what you just pointed out is, it doesn't really happen unless you have folks who have lived here for quite a while, probably multi-generational, or, you know, have at least lived here for, you know, longer than a couple of years. And then it also gets into, you know, the size of the town, maybe the aesthetics of the town, you know, there's so much that goes into maintaining small-town charm, or even identifying, you know, what that is that makes a small town different from a big town. And achieving that balance between having the amenities that are found in a large city and then maintaining that charm, you know, even identifying that balance becomes tricky, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So that almost reaches out into kind of not only goals, but almost like a sub-vision, you know, what is it that makes us a small town that lends itself to that charm? And then how do we preserve it after we've identified it? Any others that stand out from that list? We can put them all in there if you like them all. But we might want to narrow it down a little bit.
I think safe neighborhoods is one. I've lived here twelve years, I came here from the city of Arlington, where I lived for well over twenty-five years. I've never felt any safer than here. I mean, I'd feel safe leaving my car unlocked and stuff outside, I mean, I really don't, I've never had any crime issues or, it's a different world for me from, people that grew up here probably go, oh my gosh, there's muggers running wild around, they're here now. But if you come from, like I said, the DFW area, your perspective is it's very, very safe down here.
What about, talked a little bit about outdoor amenities, kind of touched on that a little bit with the boat docks and needing parks, you know, but obviously, we're in a part of North Texas that has hills and, you know, some more natural areas, and closer to where I live, it would be great to have some topography, some hills, because we're pretty flat. That could be one that we, you know, we try to incorporate as we're looking at growth and development. How do we identify the natural amenities that we have and preserve them? So that's one to maybe think about that we touched on a little bit tonight, but could maybe go a little bit deeper into. Do y'all have any thoughts along those lines? It's getting late, I know.
I think you're pretty limited with topography, because we're literally in the valley, you know, you're at the lowest elevation right now here due to the lake. I think the city's done a really nice job with the walking paths that they built here on the north side of town. I think that was, there was nice vision in that. The problem is, I think, a lot, I don't know, I don't see a lot of ability to do anything further with that, because most of the lake is privately owned and the prices are just outrageous. I don't know really how you can, you could further advance anything trail-wise or walking-wise along the lake right now.
We do have some bicycle paths coming with the 377 expansion, and they've talked about carrying those throughout the city, so we're hoping that that's a possibility.
I ain't riding no bike.
Yeah, outdoor amenities can mean a, you know, a lot of things. It might mean integration with nature, and it might be, you know, just ways to maximize what would otherwise function as a highway or a parking lot today. maximize what would otherwise function as a highway, or, or a parking lot today, and, you know, could be, could be something more in, in the future. If, if we had to narrow that down, to narrow this list down to, to maybe two or three, would anybody have a, have a top three?
I'd say waterfront, small-town charm, and historic places would be my top three.
The authentic, unique downtown, I think, is, is.
I think you could probably take business and industry center out, that's just my thought.
I'd agree with that.
When you mean historic places, you're talking about, I mean, we're historic, but you're talking about officially historic places with plaques and?
Downtown, probably.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I do think that's, that's something that sets this community apart, is just your overall concentration of designated historic buildings.
Well, I think waterfront, authentic, unique downtown, and small-town charm.
Yeah, I might say something like historic downtown in places, that might be an option, to try to incorporate the downtown into that historic part.
I'm not so sure that public art is a, a real.
I'd agree with that, I don't think that applies real well.
In terms of a vision.
Actually, the art, the art community here in Granbury is growing very rapidly.
Yeah, I just think of public meaning like statues and things like that, I mean, I think that is, that's kind of what I interpreted it, I don't know. But, yeah, we do have a, a pretty large art community, but it's more like, inside of local, you know, inside of a business kind of thing.
But it, it may contribute to that unique downtown, or maybe it even goes outside downtown.
A lot of people look, a lot of people look for galleries when they come to these kinds of towns, I do, we do, so. And LGA is doing a great job, I think, of expanding that. It's interesting to me, when I first came here, I, I was traveling a lot still, and it seemed like everywhere I went, I was in Seattle at a meeting, and someone asked me where I was from, and I said, well, a little town southwest of Fort Worth, you've probably never heard of it, Granbury. Oh, my parents live on Longview. I was in Paris at the airport at a hotel, and someone asked me where I lived, and it blew my mind, I mentioned Granbury, and they knew the town.
Really?
This town's better known, I, I encountered that all across the United States. It's amazing, it's better known than we probably really appreciate and understand. You know, Fredericksburg is a real popular destination place, right? We were there recently, and frankly, it's a nice place, but I think Granbury's got a lot more than, than that, because of.
Doesn't have a lake going through the middle of it.
Yeah.
I live on the main body, and so it seems like also that, I'm not a fisherman, okay, but it seems like the fishing tournaments are pretty intense here in town, is that correct? Or, I don't know how much that's hyped, or how much visibility that gets outside of the community, but.
I think ever since that new tackle shop, Tri-Lakes came into town, they sponsor a, a large amount, they actually have a, a, what they call a working man's tournament, it's every Thursday, and they get, I think they had sixty boats in it last week.
It's a riot to watch some boats go by, eighty miles an hour, or whatever it is, yeah.
And that, that certainly could be something as of an opportunity to promote things like that as well, because Granbury's, the lake itself has never really been, it's been known as the leisure lake more than a fishing lake.
Right.
But if, if you could do something to promote it as more of a fishing lake, that would certainly bring other people in as well for things. Interesting.
Might, might need to bring some fish in.
No, there's, there's good fish here, I went fishing not long ago.
Didn't somebody just break a record for a catfish?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're not a lake fork by any means, in terms of bass, but I tell you what, there's a lot of crappie, and there's a lot of stripers in this lake.
But that, that sounds like an opportunity to identify a differentiator compared to other communities, you know, you mentioned Lake Fork, and I can remember working out in, in Hunt County and around Lake Tewocany, and that was something that, that came up with, at some of their public meetings, is how to bring more tournaments to the lake and, and bring more folks in from a tourism standpoint, and, you know, that was a big competitor that was nearby. You know, here, I, I would think that the amount of competition there would be a little bit less, but still possibly a, a growth area.
It's too bad we can't get the riverboat back, you know, back when we had the riverboat on this lake, we didn't have the population and the activity to support it, but.
Yeah, that's true.
I would guess that that would be a booming operation today.
Is that, tell me what that is, is that kind of like a paddle boat, or?
It was an actual, looked like a paddleboat riverboat, and it was a dinner cruise, people could go out on just a evening cruise, and then they had a dinner cruise, and they moved the boat and took it to another lake, I don't know where they took it.
It was actually for sale here about five years ago.
Oh, is it? Yeah, but it was pretty cool to see that running back and forth.
When we, when we lived near Jopul Lake, there was a party barge, that was like this two-story boat that you could rent, I think it held two hundred people, but it didn't have the, the character of a, of a paddle boat, it's, it's just kind of a big building on, on the water. So, I, I've, I heard, unique downtown, waterfront community, and small-town charm were kind of our, kind of our top three?
How did we incorporate historic into that?
So, maybe, maybe kind of working in historic with, with downtown, yeah, okay, in, in some order. Okay, well, we're going to bring that back to y'all and, and kind of work on that a little bit, kind of come up with a draft vision that, that encapsulates, you know, not only those three things, but, but also some of the other feedback from our, our SWOT analysis. So, for kind of next steps, you can see right underneath the row of yellow, we've got our planning and zoning commission meeting, so those aren't narrowed down to the day yet, but we, we want to come back roughly in the June-July timeframe, early summer, after we've had our open house, with a draft vision and goals chapter. So, again, if, if y'all are able to complete that, that exercise where you evaluate each of those goals, that'll really help provide good input into that chapter. We're also going to take the, the things that we've heard tonight, and thank you, Wendy, for, for taking notes while we've been having this, this wonderful discussion, and kind of encapsulate some of that feedback, and then we can make sure that we've captured what y'all have said tonight, and also come back with a, with a draft vision. And from there, we'll get, working on the specific plan chapters, and, and come back to y'all in, in early fall with a, with a draft of that. So, that was, that was really all that we had for tonight, I want to thank y'all for the discussion. Y'all probably saw that you had one item on the agenda tonight, and thought you'd be getting out of here early, so I appreciate you, you spending time with us tonight. One more time, just to, to plug that exercise, that, that really helps us out, if y'all kind of evaluate each of those goals. And we look forward to, to seeing y'all again, hopefully at the, the open house, which will take place here at City Hall on April eighteenth, and I hope, hope y'all can be there for that, and if not, we'll, we'll see you probably sometime in June.
What time will that be?
That'll be come and go, it's between five-thirty and seven-thirty, so there's not going to be a specific sit-down presentation-style format, folks are just able to, to mingle. We'll have several boards set up around the councils, I believe we're in the council chambers, right, Kira, so we'll, we'll probably clear out some of these chairs and have some boards with some of the information you, you saw tonight. We're also going to ask folks to help us evaluate those, those goals from the 2016 plan.
Will that be open to the public?
That'll be open to the public, yes, yeah, we want as many folks within the, the city limits.
Are you already publicizing that, or is that?
We, yes, we, we've got a, we've got a video, I don't know if, if the video is out now, and we're also working on a, on a flyer.
Right, so we've, we've got newspaper and media, as well as video online, and other media sources that, that are being deployed to get people informed of the open house meeting.
And when does this survey need to be, do you have a timeframe that this needs to be back?
As, as soon as you can, because we, we do want to start working on that, that next stage of developing the update, so that'll, that'll really start in earnest after the, the open house in late April, so if, if we can, if we can get that sometime in the next couple of weeks, then we can, we can incorporate that.
Is there an email to send that back to, or just bring it to, to, to City Hall?
If you could, we'd like you to drop it off to Community Development.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kira, any, anything else that I failed to mention?
I think you covered it very adequately, thank you, and your team.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Well, if there's no further business for this evening, then we will adjourn the meeting.